This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 2022-06, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the City Council meeting by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 p.m., the day of the meeting. Include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comment onto the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the City Council and kept on file as part of the official record of the council meeting. If you have any questions on how to attend virtually or are encountering difficulties connecting to the meeting, please contact the city clerk at 209-646-4812 or email her at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us. Welcome everyone to our regular council meeting today, Monday, February 28th, 2022. And I'll call this meeting to order. Can I please get the roll call?
Councilmember Casey. Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. Today we have an invocation by Pastor Chris Henry from the Valley Christian Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we invite you into the City Council and we look to you today for wisdom in every decision that is made here. May it will be done in this council and in our lives. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Today we have three presentations. First presentation is by Stan Cog. And we have Ohedya from the C. She's a senior planner for Stan Cog. She will be on Zoom. This is a presentation of the Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. Are you on?
Yes, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for pulling up the slides. Give me a moment while I get my screen situated. All right. Well, thanks for having me. Good evening. My name is Isaiel Oquida. I'm a senior planner at the St. Louis Council of Governments. I am here to talk to you tonight about the Stan Cog Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. A little background on Stan Cog. As many of you are already aware, Stan Cog is governed by a decision-making body called the Policy Board that's comprised of 16 elected officials from all of our member agencies countywide. This includes five representatives from the St. Louis County Board of Supervisors, three representatives from the Modesto City Council, and one representative from each of the other eight city councils in St. Louis County. Currently, the City of Series has one representative, which is your Mayor Javi Lopez, and he serves on the Stan Cog Board. Every four years, Stan Cog is required to update the Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. This is a planning-level effort that requires close coordination with our planning partners at the federal, state, and local levels. And we've been working very closely with the nine cities and county on the plan. Quick thanks and shout out to Mayor Lopez, council members, and Series staff. We appreciate staff's input during the development of our listing of regional transportation projects for inclusion of the plan. So thank you for that support up to this point. On the next slide, there's a quick agenda of what I'll be talking about today, what we've done on Project Outreach, a quick overview of RTPSES, some goal-setting that's been done to date, scenario development that's currently in progress, and the next steps to the plan. Today's presentation is one of many. Outreach activities are being held in support of the update. The major elements of the outreach include Stan Cog's Valley Vision St. Louis Steering Committee, which includes representation from all of the cities and unincorporated counties. So it's a subcommittee that's been created. Christopher Holm has served on the committee and has provided support during this update process. We're also doing outreach to city councils, county board of supervisors, Stan Cog bike, pedestrians, citizens, and other advisory committees. We've held two rounds of community workshop to date where we sought input from community-based organizations, business leaders, members of the public. An important aspect of the public workshops and outreach is that the presentations that we have conducted were available in Spanish and English to encourage participation for all residents in the county. We have also created an interactive project website to allow members of the community to register, to receive regular emails so that they're aware of upcoming events. And the website also hosts a survey, a public meeting presentation, and other useful information. And that website is on the screen, valleyvision2046.com. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. So on the next slide, you'll see a quick overview of what exactly is the RTPSES. What is Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy? It is the long-range transportation plan for the region, for St. Louis County. One of the most important elements of the plan is that the list of transportation projects that your agency and all other agencies in the region are planning to implement are included from now up until 25 years in the future. Like I mentioned, we worked with all of the agency staff to get this project list updated. Its preparation is mandated by both the federal government and the state of California, and it must cover at least a 20-year horizon and be updated every four years. Like I mentioned, ours is 25 years. One of the most, another important feature of the plan is that it reflects the shared vision of the cities and St. Louis County for a transportation system that meets its residents' needs. So we coordinated also with the region to look at the planned land uses and development and reflect goals for housing and employment and also for conservation of ag land, which is very important to our region. It is also important to note that this document is a programmatic document. It's more focused on how the transportation pieces fit together rather than any one individual project. Individual project planning is handled outside of this planning process. And as I mentioned, we're very closely coordinated through the Valley Vision St. Louis Steering Committee, which is comprised of not only the 10 local agency planning representatives, but other groups as well, including community-based organizations and members of the housing industry. On the next slide, there's quick bullet points of what the plan must do. It must be multimodal. It must consider fine roadway, transit, bike, pedestrian, and aviation projects. It must also be financially constrained, meaning that the expenses over the 20-plus years of the program do not exceed what we can conceivably bring into the region through state and federal funding sources and local funding sources. The plan also must meet the federal standards for air quality to support greenhouse gas emission reduction targets intended to combat the climate change issue as mandated by the state of California. The Sustainable Communities Strategies element of the plan details how we can achieve those JHE reduction goals set forth by the California Air Resources Board. The plan must also comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, which focuses on making sure that we understand and address any potential negative environmental impact that might result from the plan. On the next slide, I have some of the, or all of those that the Valley Vision St. Louis Steering Committee has established to date. There's 11 distinct goals. I'm not going to read all of them today, but they range from improving the ability of people and goods to move, here a variety of mobility options, excuse me, minimizing impacts on clean air and natural resources, and also efficiently using available transportation funding. The rest of the goals and objectives can be also found on our, on Valley Vision 2046 website. Some of the guiding principles on the next slide. These are guiding principles that are very important part of our approach to developing the RTPSES. We are using a scenario analysis to develop a long-range solution to meet state and federal requirements. So we're currently working with the Valley Vision St. Louis Steering Committee on developing, developing four distinct scenarios that emphasize different growth patterns based on the principles shown on the screen that include ensuring a jobs-housing balance, encouraging growth in areas where the total annual miles of vehicle travel are already low, preserving farmland, that's very important to the region's economic engine, increasing access to opportunity for everyone, including low-income and minority populations, and encouraging info growth. So these guiding principles are helping ensure that we meet the greenhouse gas emission reduction targets, regional housing needs objectives, and our ag preservation goals in our region. On the next slide, I have some next steps. As mentioned, we're currently analyzing the scenarios to see how they perform with regard to meeting the greenhouse gas emission targets and also the national ambient air quality standards. This month, or almost this month, in March, we'll be doing another round of outreach to local stakeholder groups that represent low-income minority groups. So we're anticipating late March, but the date has not been set yet. We'll set that within the next week or so. Once the results of the scenario analysis has been analyzed and we have a scenario that meets the state and federal requirements, we'll be asking the Valley Vision St. Louis to select a preferred scenario or recommend a preferred scenario to the policy board. We'll then also be developing the draft Regional Transportation Plan and prepare an environmental impact analysis and report. And we'll post the draft documents for public review. After that, there will be two formal public hearings that are anticipated to be started late spring. And then, of course, Stan Cog staff will address the public comments on the plan and be bringing the draft final plan for consideration of approval summer of 2022, around the July-August timeframe. On the next slide again, we have the ValleyVision2046.com website. All information that we're going to be distributing can be found here. Past presentations, the goals and objectives I mentioned today. Both, I believe it also has like the, you could watch the presentation over again, watch the workshops over again, and also to stay in the loop on the project as it moves along. If you scroll all the way down to the, on the ValleyVision2046.com, you can sign up to receive regular notifications as this webpage is updated. So please do either sign up to receive notification or if you just have another question and remember something and want to discuss, my email is also on the screen, iojeda@stan cog.org for anyone that might have joined through the phone. So feel free to contact me. Feel free to sign up and ask questions. And let's stay engaged and get this plan updated. We're very excited of including all the region and moving the 2022 RTPSES forward. This completes my presentation for tonight. I'm available for any questions you might have. But thank you for giving me the time to speak today.
Thank you very much. Council, do we have any questions? Any members of the public that have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very, very much once again. Moving on to our next presentation. We have Recreation Service Department's Annual Report. Joseph Chavez, our Recreation Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Once again, Joey Chavez, Recreation Manager. First, I'd like to, like for you guys to meet, meet our staff. We have Katie, Katie Lindberg, who is our Recreation Supervisor. Recreation Admin Coordinator is Tracy Ferguson. Then also, we have Recreation Coordinator Crystal Aguilar. Three of the four of us have been here the past six months. And Crystal has been here going on, I believe, six years. So we're fairly new here, but we have been doing a lot in this past six months. Keeping everything together, coming, bringing new programs to the area, being involved in a lot of special committees. So our department is growing. To add on to our staff, we have seven part-time regular staff that are here for rentals throughout the day, throughout the week. We have, we're recruiting right now for seasonal staff, 10 to 12 aquatics staff members and three to five for our summer camp program. Next slide, please. Our key services. There's, there's a whole list of them. Classes and services. Rentals, rentals is kind of our, is our big mark here, especially here at the community center. We have rentals probably Monday through, Monday through Sunday. And very busy, very promising this year with rentals coming in. We have a lot of pre-wedding. They're called jagos that start on Wednesday. They go Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays. So those are big. We do make exceptions for rentals at the last minute for having people that pass away. It's kind of a special moment for them. So we kind of make it work for them the last minute to open the doors for them. So we'll work around schedules and make it happen to celebrate their lives. Facilities, like I said, the community center is a large one here. We do also have the Legion Hall in River Bluff. River Bluff is home to Series U Soccer. We also have a competitive soccer league there, an adult soccer league there. So those fields are used Monday through Sunday. By saying that, you know, recreation, we're open seven days a week. We're, you know, we're busy seven days a week. We're always, I'm doing, there's always something going on in the recreation, Monday through Sunday. Our aquatics program, we're gearing up for that. We're planning on having training at the end of this, the end of March to start our program starting in June. Our youth sports program, we're also working on that as we speak. Our senior program, we've been in the talks of that since last week. Want to bring them back. We're talking about having mills coming into the community center, maybe Monday, Wednesdays, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, because Thursdays and Fridays, we do have some heavy rentals. So space is not going to be there, but we're working with Ann and Blue Cross. They're talking about partnership with us to bring some activities for the seniors. So hopefully by April, we'll have that program up and back coming here at the, at the community center. Special community events. We've been, lots of discussion. Our summer concerts in the park, that's going very well. I would like to thank Mayor and Vice Mayor for their support on this. I believe we have all six weeks already dialed in and locked in. So I think that's going to be very successful this year and build on it for the next years to come. Trunk or Treat event. That was my first event when I first started here. Really amazed how that turned out to see, you know, step back and the, look back and meet new faces. I estimated about 6,000 to 7,000 people at that event. It was huge, very successful. You see everybody out, even through the pandemic. People still came out. The Christmas Tree Festival, because opening Christmas Tree Lane, that was another that we never experienced. We kind of changed up the atmosphere. I'm having that Costa Fields, working with CYB on that, the partnership. And I would say that was a very successful event too. Just to build on. So we're setting our marks pretty high and think we can keep going throughout the, throughout the years. And thanks to staff, our full-time staff that really are, are really stepping out of the plate and going out of their box and thinking outside the box and being available to be out here at the special events. Easter egg, scavenger hunt. That's, that's going to be a new event that we're, we're going to be hosting this year at Costa Fields, and that's going to be in April, I believe, April 10th, on a Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00. So that's, that's a new event. We're kind of excited to do in that one. I know it's been talked in the past, but it's never been followed through. We are going to push through that and make that happen. Arbor Day, Street Fair. We work with the Chamber with the Street Fair and some other special events downtown. Street Fair dates will be May 7th and 8th. That was the first week of May. I kind of question that because I know May 8th is Mother's Day. And you go, no, we're still doing. And I guess it's a big event on that, that weekend. So I'm really excited about seeing that one there. We do have a scholarship program. He's also applied for a few grants. We need services partnerships. There's a, there's a whole list of partnerships that we're trying to rebrand and bring back. You know, the few ones are, you know, Big Valley Christian that, that are in this facility, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Sundays. Working with Alliance Rotary. Those are, those are pretty big. I'd say those are the big three ones. The big three, I say that we're trying to build that partnership. And then also working with the school district to build our partnership back with the school districts. Because we do use Series High for the aquatic program and then also other junior high, high schools for their gym use. So we got to build that partnership. And we've been meeting with them, with staff, and trying to make those things happen. And it's been pretty good. They use our facilities too for their, for their events. So we get to see a lot, a lot of their contacts coming in through the. Next slide, please. Winter and spring community center programs. We do a virtual driver's education. There's a few that go online on that. We don't see a lot of, a lot of that. But we do see a lot of classes on Saturdays, and that's a lot of dance classes here on the weekends that are fully booked, booked. STEM and robotics classes are big. So on the weekends, those classes are going while we have activities going, usually the small assembly and the large assembly. And the meeting rooms upstairs are all booked normally Monday on, I say Fridays and Saturdays. Saturdays are big days. As you guys know, Sundays, Big Valley Christian is in here from Sundays from 5:00 in the morning till about 1:30 in the afternoon on Sunday. Our Zuma Fit class is, we call it like, kind of like the senior aerobics. They're here Mondays afternoons. They're here upstairs now, but then they come on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the mornings and afternoons, and it's a great program. Some of you guys are aware, you guys probably have meetings. You got them stomping down on the thing. Hey, can you turn that? The seniors, they're really good about it. The class is really good. When I first started, there was probably maybe like six or seven of them. There's probably about 15, 16 now that come to the class. They love it. They work out for 45 minutes, and they are exhausted when they come down the stairs. It's really great because we, we say good morning to them every day. Make the effort to stay staff up front and say, welcome all in. And they really appreciate that, and they leave. They, they're really thankful. So we appreciate them coming in. And then we also have more classes to come on these programs. Next, please. Winter, winter and spring sports programs. We're trying to bring some of our sports programs back. I know a lot of them were contracted out. We're still contracting some out. We want to bring back basketball next fall, which we run our own program. So you know, spring flag football, we're trying to get that back in. All Sports Camp. And then for like spring break, we want to bring those. And then especially in the summer, we want to have more sports camps, different sports camps, basketball, flag football, baseball, some of the other ones that we want to have more for the kids here. One of our top programs that we're running now at Series High and at Central, I believe they moved to Central Valley, is our tennis program. His contractor, his name is George. Really great guy. His classes are building up fast. So we're really happy to have tennis. A lot of cities don't have tennis, but he, he has tennis and he has a lot of clientele coming in for those programs. Next slide, please. Our new up-and-coming events and programs. Like I said, we have our Easter egg scavenger hunt, April 10th. That'll be from 1:00 to 3:00. And we're still working on details on that. Our pitch hit and run, that's through Major League Baseball. That's kind of a big one we're bringing back. Our Recreation Supervisor Katie Lindberg. She's ran that program, also ran that program. It's a great program for the city. We had the fields, so why not use our fields on? There can be also a grant opportunity later down the road to refurbish those fields with more competition and hopefully maybe. So that would be on May 21st. Our summer sports programs will be June through August, the same time we're running our aquatics programming. Our summer will be really, really busy, tied up, everyone, all of us. And then also the, one of our bigger things we wanted to bring back is, you know, for staff and surrounding cities, is have like a softball tournament with surrounding cities. I think it'd be a great competition, you know, whoever can be available. I think, you know, if we have to make three or two to three teams here for the city series, it'd be great. I think everybody would get involved in that, like a co-ed. So I think it'll be great. Maybe PD can put a team together for PD and Fire and staff get a thing. I think it'd be great. Council, you guys are all more welcome. So we look forward for that one. That's going to be fun. So we have a lot of exciting things coming up. We're trying to bring them back, and we're getting there. And then, next slide, please. Our up-and-coming annual spring and summer events. We have Arbor Day. Like I said, we're going to be helping out with the street fair. We'll have a booth, but they also will partner with it. They use our sound equipment for that event. It's a two-day event. Consoles in the Park, I'm really excited about seeing that. I think we got that nailed down. Like I talked about that before. I'm really excited to be seeing that. That's going to be on Tuesday nights, I believe, from, I want to say 6:00 to 8:00. We also be having food there, which is good because people want food at our events. And I can tell that's going to be a great, in our aquatics program and our kids' summer camp. So those aquatics and kids program, we're, we're trying to rebrand that. So it's, it's going to be, you know, this whole year that we're planning out, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be tight. But I think by the end of next year, it's going to be just, it's going to be smoother for us to run everything because we're just getting the adapt for everyone. So I think for the years to come, it's going to be, it's not going to be rocket science for us. We're just really bearing down just to clean a lot of things up and make some changes here and there. Now, some people don't like changes, but, you know, little changes as, as we come and see things, it just, it just works out better for. Next slide, please. Recreation Rentals. Like I said, the community center is one of our, one of our highest. There's a lot of people that go through this building. I would say there's over, I would say a couple thousand people that come to this building Monday through Sunday. And there's some big, big events. Hosted the Rotary Craft Feed over the weekend. They came and set up on Friday, and that was here on Saturday. So it's a big event with other small little birthday parties going upstairs. So there's a lot of foot traffic that's coming through here and, and meeting new faces. And that's how we meet a lot of new partnerships. American Legion Hall is a great hall. We do have a lot of venues there. But when people see this venue and people come here, they want to have their event here. And right now, it's, I hate to say it, the whole year is almost planned out in this event. So they go to the American Legion, but then they wait for something to come up to open up here. The facility is just beautiful here. River Bluff Soccer Complex. Like I said, we work with three organizations. We try to fit other people in, in those facilities, but it's really difficult when you have three reorganization because you're talking, talking a lot of teams that fill those fields. But we do have nine fields. talking a lot of teams that fill those fields, but we do have nine fields and, but we do the best we can to make it happen. Trying to build that partnership, working together. Right now it's, it's working well. Try to stay with those guys and meet with those guys once a month. Um, to give them their schedules and, and sure they communicate with us. Um, BBG contract is a big one. Him who, on that contract we work with is, is a very good gentleman. Uh, we try to, you know, work with him and do the best we can to accommodate him. Um, and it's just partnerships, you know? He does a lot for this community center here and for the city of Series. Um, George Costa Fields, like I said, CYB, um, working with them. It's been a great partnership with them, working with them. Um, the more partnerships we have, it just makes it easier, I think, for the city and recreation. And our special event, city special events, um, working with a chamber on some. Spoke with Alex, our city manager, he would like to see more downtown, more events downtown. That's one of the things I'm working with the chance to see what we can do. If they can't do it, then we'll jump in. Of doing that. Downtown is, you come through on the weekends that it's, it's busy downtown. Those are the things we're working on. Next slide please. Work in progress. Um, like I said, one of our, is our, is, is our increase in rentals, not just here, but at the American Legion and our, um, parks. Parks are, are filled. Smyrna Parks, one of our biggest ones. We're bluff. Um, is our, probably the two main parks that are being rented out. Um, they've been starting being rented since last month, even with a cold. It's kind of shocked, but people want to get out. And, and so their, their, their rent, Smyrna Park, um, Legion is, is being rented out almost every weekend. Um, additional community center classes, we want to add, um, additional youth programming. Additional even adult, uh, recreation programs we want to bring back is like a coed league. Um, for men, men and women, just a coed league to start off at Costa Fields, just to see how that ramps up. Would like to start doing that. And then, like I said, bringing our seniors back into the building. One of the things we've been working on the last few months, hopefully by April, we have them back in our facility. That would do it. Do you guys have any, any questions?
Thank you very much for all the hard work you and your staff do. I'm really excited for all these programs and these upcoming programs. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Counsel, any questions, comments? Uh, many members from the public have any questions or comments? If on up. Thank you, Chavez.
Genie Akley Series. Mr. Chavez, you mentioned something about, uh, you can use a community center for some kind of funeral service of some sort. I have a question. There's probably people in our society without a doubt that are atheists or whatever. And when someone in their family or friends die, they might want to go to some place to pay respect to them as a reception type thing where friends and family get together and they don't want to be in a church atmosphere. My question to you, Mr. Chavez is, can a funeral service be held here in the community center? With a casket? And hopefully the person inside? Or even an urn?
Thank you for the question. That, that's a, that's a good question. And that's something I, I, I can't answer on that right now. That's something where I would have to talk to the city manager, staff about that, that situation. That hasn't came up to me before, but that's a, it's a great question. Can always look into that.
Thank you for the question. Any members on Zoom? It's, anybody here has a question? Seeing none. Thank you, Chavez. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to the last presentation. So as everybody well knows that on Friday, um, we are, we were at a hundred and four years in the city of Series. So today I have a proclamation recognizing the city of Series, a hundred and four years. So happy birthday, Series. And thank you for everybody who came here today and participated. Also, Akanda, thank you for bringing the, the treats. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. So, uh, where a series incorporated into a general law city of the state of California on February twenty-fifth, nineteen eighteen. And whereas Daniel Whitmore founded Series in eighteen sixty-seven and built the first home in eighteen seventy. And whereas in eighteen seventy-one, Alma J. Carter, daughter of Levi and Fana Carter, selected the name Series due to its fruitful soil that was a reminder of the Roman pre-Christian goddess of the same name who presided over festivals and fertility and agricultural. And whereas a train depot was added to Series for the Central Pacific Railroad in eighteen seventy-one. And whereas Series Volunteer Fire Department was formed in June of nineteen eleven with George F. Wood as the first fire chief. And whereas the first regular meeting of the Board of Trustees was held on March eleventh in nineteen eighteen. And whereas the first election of Board of Trustees was held in April eighth, nineteen eighteen. And Vaughn D. Whitmore was elected as mayor. And whereas together we have achieved a milestone in reaching the city of Series one hundred and fourth anniversary. Now therefore, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, Councilmember Jim Casey, Mike Klein and Linda Rhino do hereby proclaiming February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two as the hundred and fourth anniversary of Series cityhood. And invites all Series residents, businesses and organizations to join the city in celebrating our heritage, to seek opportunities to gain knowledge of history and traditions of this fine community as being intrinsic to the developing greater pride in the city of Series. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Does anybody in the public would like to make a comment? Come on up.
Genie Akley Series. It's come to my attention a few weeks ago that, uh, and, and I can't remember the last one when it was, I think. Councilmember Linda Rhino, that it was a few years back, but I can't remember. Anyway, there's, I, there's going to be a, I guess, a meeting with all the department heads discussing on what they're doing and where they're going to be led into the following year. I'd just like to say that these people made these, these, uh, decisions a long time ago, which we established as municipal codes. Should these, all these departments feel that there's something, they should review the, the city codes. If there's something in there they do not like, I hope they bring it up that day. I think it's, uh, March eighteenth at eight o'clock, they start.
So Yekely, I just want to make sure that this is, this has to do with the proclamation because we have a not open citizens communications.
Oh.
I just want to make sure. I don't know if there's some confusion or not, but you want to talk about that during citizens communication?
Yeah.
Okay, just wait and then we'll go ahead and start. We'll start your clock, your clock back up. All right, any, anybody on Zoom? We have somebody on Zoom that would like to say something about, uh, our hundred and fourth birthday. Hold on, Mr. Conda. Let me, let me double check to see if, uh.
Mr. Brandt, your hand raised. I will, I mute your mic.
Thank you and good evening, council. Uh, needless to say, I was a bit, I had to chuckle when I saw the top hats of the mayor and the vice mayor. Uh, my name is Lee Brandt and I was on the original committee for the hundred year celebration. Uh, Paul Caruso, he headed it up along with Lisa Montero Moore. There was a few of us that were on that committee. Uh, as you very well know, there is a, huh, I don't know. I, I don't know what you call it out there in the corner of the parking lot. Uh, centennial, centennial bricks. There was a lot of money raised. And due to the pandemic, things got set back. Due to staff changes, things got set back. And as I sit here watching this, I am just a little, I was a little taken back. The fact that you guys are celebrating, uh, Series, uh, for a hundred and four years. Uh, it would have been nice if the committee would have been notified that you guys are celebrating. And I'm sure that there would have been a few of us that would have been in the chambers right now. Uh, I had, my wife and I, we both dressed up. We had a, uh, a ball, a fundraiser ball that was there at the council chambers. And in the, the big building, which like I said, uh, before, we raised a lot of money. And I'm just kind of disappointed that nobody bothered to notify us that the celebration was going on. Uh, I'm not sure on where the, uh, the centennial, uh, whatever you call it in, in, on the parking lot, when that's going to be dedicated. And I would hope it was, would be dedicated. Uh, we had hoped to have it done in, uh, February of two thousand, whatever, eighteen, when it was the official one hundred year. Uh, but like I said, I'm just a little bit upset that nobody from staff or anybody from the city reached out to us to let us know that this had happened.
And Lee, I do have, I do have some clarification. It was, it was my understanding that that was a special event under a hundred year anniversary. And if the city council wishes to discuss this further about doing something like that every year, that would be up to the city council. This is merely just a happy birthday celebration. That's the only reason why I don't think that, that committee was activated, Mr. Lee. So my apologies if you, if you're feeling, uh, that disappointed in regards to that. But I, I wouldn't see a problem with us having that discussion and trying to do something like this every, every year. It would be fun, Lee. It really would be. So it was, this is merely something small that we decided to, uh, send out the email to the council. They were, they were up to it and we just did something really, really small, Lee. So, but I kind of like the idea of a possibility, if in the future we can, we can do something a little bit bigger. But it's really up to the city council on how they would like to proceed with that, Lee.
All right. Yeah. I, I, and I totally concur and I understand where you're coming from. Uh, it's just kind of a, kind of a bummer. I mean, i- is there, is there any set date for the, uh, presentation of, you know, all, all the monies and all that stuff that, that the, the committee did? I mean, if you want to, we can carry it on, carrying this into the, to the regular, uh.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's, it's a good conversation to have in the future. I wouldn't know anything about the committee in regards to monies or anything like that.
Right.
We'll, we'll see if we can bring that up. So Friday was the actual anniversary. And, uh, I remember last year we put together a, a mayor's video that was a celebration of a hundred and four. We didn't do no, no big celebration then. So it, but like I said, Lee, it just sounds like, uh, it wouldn't be a bad idea to do this every year. Maybe make it a little bit bigger. We'll, we'll have that discussion. But also at the same time, we got to discuss that during the budget, um, budget meetings in regards to what we could.
Exactly.
Yeah. So thank you, Lee. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Have a good day.
You too. Anybody else on Zoom? I know I have Mr. Condo here.
I see no.
Somebody else on Zoom?
No, not on Zoom.
Akanda, go ahead. Thank you.
I give you a congratulations to all the council members and all the staff. We are celebrating one hundred and four years together. And we pray to God together, city of Series is the best place in our area in the future. So that's why I give you congratulations to all the staff and the council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the food too. I'll, I have some on the way. I couldn't do it because my acid reflexes. Anyways, is there anybody else in the chambers that would like to make a comment? Okay. Any more comments by the council? Any staff like to say anything? Okay, moving on. Now moving on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes, resolution two thousand and seven, one oh six, for expression of a non-agenda item. Matters in the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules and decorum. The rules and decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to comment on business communications?
First person with her hand raised is Mr. Brandt. Mr. Brandt, I'll unmute your mic.
Ah, good evening, good evening again. Uh, I just want to, you know, go back to the, is there any planning in the works for the dedication of the corner for the hundred year, uh, celebration? I mean, I know that the, uh, uh, the corner is probably, I don't know if ninety-five percent, it could be done for all I know. Uh, I would just, it, it would be nice to know if there's a date, you know, set, you know, like maybe perhaps being that the, uh, the street fair is coming back, you know, maybe we could have a dedication then. You know, and, uh, that's basically all I got to say. I just, I, you know, and, and I already said it, that, you know, I was just kind of upset that the, the way that this whole thing has been handled. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. And we'll try to see if we can get an update on that and we'll bring you back.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay. Okay, members of the public that would like, uh, go ahead, step up.
Genie Akley Series. Now I have to figure out where I left off.
Might as well just start all over so we can catch up.
I just want to address the council and, and all the people that are here that work in administrative part of the city. Series has come a long way, I guess, in a hundred and four years. Interesting to see what happens in the next four or five. But anyway, from one of my understanding is there's a, uh, a meeting on the eighteenth of March that will be all the department heads, uh, talking or sharing information on, uh, their department, where it's at presently and where it's going to go in the future. Whether it be this year, next year, or whatever. I have a suggestion that, that they contact all the people that, all their coworkers and get some input from them on what they think about the different codes in their departments. If there's anything to be brought up, it should be brought up on that day, on the eighteenth of March. And if for some reason there's, uh, codes, municipal codes, and there's all kinds. They're not just the ones that I am concerned about. Uh, if there's any codes there that they feel should be changed or eliminated, I think that should be considered and that the council should bring that up, bring a public hearing and see the people that want to get rid of certain codes in the city. And, uh, and then after everything is done, the council can vote yes or no on removing certain codes. And I think that possibly you'll have some support either not in the chamber itself, but maybe on the outside from people that wish to eliminate certain codes. It doesn't reflect their way of living here. And, uh, hopefully that won't happen, but, uh, some of the codes have been around and, and they seem kind of not tailored to it sometimes the way they should be. And in that case, I think they ought to eliminate them. And if there's elimination, I'm all for it. And then we can get back to having a free for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that March eighteenth meeting is going to be on Zoom, right? People can watch. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Any other members of the public? Did we receive any emails? Want to make sure any other members of the public, just want to make sure before we close communication. Seeing none. Uh, citizens communication is now closed. There's no appointments. Any council member have a conflict of interest? Seeing none, moving on, moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon a single roll call vote. Is there anybody on the council that would like a consent item pool for further discussion?
Number four.
Yes, sir.
Number four.
Well, number four, okay. Uh, council member right now.
Item six and seven.
Six and seven. Any members of the public that would like an item pool besides four, six and seven? Yes, sir. What item number is that? No? Okay. Council members, anyone on Zoom land?
No hands are raised.
Okay, no hands are raised. Okay, council, let's go ahead and approve the rest. And then we have four, six and seven that we're going to open up.
Move to approve one, two, three, eight, five and eight.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Severa.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, starting off with number four. Register of audited demands for period conver- covering February ninth, twenty twenty-two through February fourteenth.
And well, really what I have is a, is a comment on this and see how we can get back on track. You know, reading this, we have vendor number, uh, one, seven, five, six. It's CG, CSG consultants for fire inspection. And I believe that our contract with the city of Modesto is including fire inspections. And yet the city hired a consulting firm to, to perform their fire extent, fire inspections. Uh, I would like to see that, you know, staff be aware of that we have a contract with the city of Modesto. And we get back on track and using the city of Modesto for our fire inspections as it's outlined in their contract.
Okay.
And if there's any changes to the contract, I believe it needs to come back to the city council for approval of changes on the contract.
So the contract that you're referring to is, is separate from Modesto Fire Department, right?
No, it's a Modesto City Fire Department contract that we're currently in. Part of the contract for services is them performing our fire inspections.
Well, that's correct. And, and the one that you're, you're referring to in the audits, is that the same one? Are they?
Yes, the audit, they, they hired, the city hired an outside firm, a consultant to do our fire inspections. Instead of, of going through the contract that was signed with Modesto City to do the fire inspections.
Right, right. Is that, is that something that I guess we'll have to look into it further? Is that something that we can actually, uh, look into? Or is it more of a, kind of a Modesto, they kind of make the decision on, on who does our inspections?
If, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I, I, I responded to council member Klein earlier, earlier today. I responded to Councilmember Klein earlier earlier today that we could certainly agendize an item for council's consideration to discuss them.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. But Chief Wise does have a comment. No, no luck. Get the man a mic. Today's not your day.
I'm trying to borrow you from talking.
Okay.
There we go.
There you go.
Test. Okay, there we go. Uh, Councilman Klein, uh, I'm not sure about the particular situation, but we also use CSG for when we get overflow of of plan checks and something that needs to be taken care of exponentially, and we're, our staff's unable to get that done. I'm not sure the case here in series, why why they were you. We also use them in series. We also use them in Turlock. And when I was here previously, we also use CSG. So I'm not sure the particular circumstance. We use them on special occasions for special specialty inspections. So I'm not sure of the particular, why they were used in this case.
Well, and I know when you were here before is because we didn't have the, we didn't have a fire inspector. You know, so we use an outside source. But my understanding, talking and and finding out with the contract that we're to use, you know, to go through Modesto City because that's who we're contracted through. So, you know, it's just a, it's just a matter of formality to bring it back to the council for an amendment into the contract. So I just wanted to bring that out in the public. So, and I, like, like the city manager said, he's, he's already responded to my emails on it, but you know, this is something that we can get move forward and take care of in a timely fashion.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Any any other comments on number four, item number four, council? Members of the public on item number four? Zoom?
Okay, move to move to adopt reg- registers audits, audits and demands for period covering February ninth, twenty twenty-two through February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving on to item number six, Resolution number twenty twenty-two oh nine, authorizing a budget amendment and authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase order to Turf Star Western for the purchase of a Toro lawnmower for the Parks Division. And was that you, Ms. Rhino?
It was. Thank you.
Thank you.
My first question is, in the staff report, it said that prior to August twenty seventeen, the city was contracting out for mower services. And and so I'm curious, before we are going out to spend this amount of money, did staff even look at the cost of contracting out just the mower, the the lawn mowing portion? And the time it would save in park staff that we are pretty short on?
Well, what I heard from the previous council that this program was cut by the previous council, so I'm not sure exactly. You know, I mean, we keep, the city council keep making changes. And you know, I mean, they they switched it from having the private contractor doing this work and and then having the city doing it. So we keep going back and forth on this issue.
Okay, well, my my question, though, is do we know if it would be more economically feasible for the city to hire someone to mow all of the the park grass and free staff that we could have them work in the parks? I don't know what the cost would be, is why I'm kind of having a hard time. I'm not saying we don't need another lawnmower, but that would be if we're keeping it within our staff. But what if we actually looked, and I don't know what a contract would cost, but it seems to me it, at this would be the perfect time that we should at least explore it, see how much it would cost versus going right out and buying another. I mean, none of us have any idea how expensive it is, right? To hire out, to hire a service to mow.
Exactly, yeah. I don't know.
And how many, and how many hours must it take staff to mow all of the parks? It must take a lot, a lot of hours to do that, that they could spend doing other things in the park.
Well, I mean, we have quite a few parks in the city, so it does it does take a lot of effort to have these parks cleaned and mowed. So so, yes, I mean, that's something that we could definitely look into, just right now.
Well, that would be, my first thought would be that we need to at least see if it's economically feasible to do that. And then my next comment would be that I understand from you, from our earliest, earlier conversation, that the city used the National Joint Powers Alliance because we get government contract pricing, but by doing that, we don't actually take bids, correct?
Correct.
But is it really found to be true that it's cheaper to do it through them or to go to a local, and I mean someone within Stanislaus County that could offer the same type of equipment we're looking for? And they will meet or maybe even underbid that price a little bit just to get our our you know, just to get us to buy from them?
Yeah, the the problem is, Ms. Rhino, is there's only three Toro vendors or dealers. There isn't any in the valley. There's one in Fresno. And there is one in the Bay Area, and there's one up, and there's one in Sacramento.
Is there some reason that it has to be Toro? Are they the only ones who make the kind of mowers that we need in our parks?
Yes, the the insurance reimbursement will not allow to use anything else but Toro.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I I have a question before Mike speaks up. So how long have we not had a lawnmower? An additional, because you had two, right? And then it caught on fire, so we have one, right?
Correct. We we had two original large lawnmowers that we do the the big parks with. The the one, the one lawnmower was out of commission for about four months now.
Four months, okay. So we haven't had an additional lawnmower for four months?
Nope.
Okay, and then, of course, you know, a lot of citizens have been complaining about certain parks not not being maintained, and obviously, you know, would not having that additional lawnmower, it's just kind of holding us back. We have thirteen public parks with about eighty-plus acres. And this money is coming from the insurance policy, correct?
About half of it is.
Reimbursed, right?
Yes.
So basically, what what you're saying is that we, if we don't take the money, we don't get a lawnmower, and this is not going to cost us anything, correct? This is strictly, this is coming from the insurance policy, correct?
Well, half of it, half of the cost is coming from the.
Half of it?
Yes.
Okay, so half of the cost is coming from the insurance company?
Right.
Okay. So I guess we'll just see, double check real quick. So on top of that, just want to make a comment that, you know, we're, we have thirteen parks, and I think that we need to most definitely take care of our parks and by, you know, not purchasing this particular lawnmower, we're going to, we're going to set back. You know, a lot of citizens are really interested in us even building Garamo Park and finishing that project that wasn't, that wasn't completed. So I do support the idea of us spending the money on on this Toro lawnmower, and I think it's very important that we do that. Mike?
You know, Sam, when you, when, you know, council member, I know, ask you to look into the previous contract. If memory serves me right, if you look into the previous contract, I believe the city of Series owned the mower. They contracted the services out and that, and whoever we contracted with came to the city corp yard, picked up the mowers every day. So can you additionally look into that? Because for some reason in my, in my mind is the city owned the mowers, all they did was contract out the manpower.
It's it's something that I have to look into, Mr. Klein. Yes, absolutely. I don't know the history of the parks, how they were maintained. But I I definitely would consider that.
Yeah, and look into that part, too, because something tells me that that that's the way the city did it. The guy had to come to the corp yard, pick up the mower, go do his parks, and he was responsible. And he even had a timeframe of what parks he did, what day of the week, and and how they did that to get them all done within a, within a five-day work week. So when you look at the previous contract, also see if that's in there?
Well, it's something that that I would most consider, yeah, absolutely. I could do that. So so you're saying that the equipment is is the city equipment that was used by a private contractor?
This from in, for some reason, in my, in my mind, it was the city equipment.
Okay.
Okay, that I'm thinking, but yet we we contracted the services. I mean, it wasn't, you know, school, Howard Training Center, anything like that. It was an individual that had yard service, but because of the type of the mower and the cut, you know, for some reason that I'm thinking, and I could be wrong, but just look into the contract, see if it's also in there.
I mean, that that could be a liability issue also.
Well, and I understand that, but but like I say, just way I'm thinking, so just look into that also.
I sure will. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Ms. Rhino, did you have an additional question?
I do.
Okay.
Again, my my issue isn't that we need two lawnmowers to take care of our parks. But when we're spending eight-four thousand dollars, I think it really benefits us that we at least look at possibility of what it would cost us to contract out. That that's all I'm asking. I'm I'm not ready to jump when I've known, I know that previously we contracted. You could, I'm guessing, find that information out for us for the next meeting to see if it's even remotely possible.
Thank you, Ms. Rhino. What's to say that we can't find somebody to contract out, but at the same time purchase this lawnmower? Just like you said, that we had a contractor in the future and still have that lawnmower on hand. I mean, I think it's best of both worlds. Okay, comes to that.
Yep.
Um, council? Any additional comments?
Yeah, with the time change and weather change, we're going to need that lawnmower more than ever. We haven't needed as much last four months because the grass doesn't grow in the winter time very much. But I hate to see us take any delay to get this mower and get the parks mowed while we're trying to research all this. I'd say mow it or buy the mower.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Members of the public would like to make a comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none?
Move to approve.
Number six.
Number six.
Move to approve number six on the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
No.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Moving on to item number seven, Resolution number twenty twenty-two ten, authorizing the acceptance of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents of the donated funds for the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Harley-Davidson police motorcycle and appropriation of the donated funds to Mitchell Harley-Davidson. I know that Chief Collins has a, you're going to speak on this item, and not to mention that Benny is here today.
I'm here to answer the.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Do you want to go ahead?
Rhino may have.
Sorry about that, chief.
I already had a lot of my questions answered by Chief Collins. The only one that I want to ask the city attorney is can we accept a monetary donation from a business legally?
Yes. As a municipal corporation, we can accept donations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions about the council? Um, if I would, Benny, would you like to speak on this item? I think it's only appropriate, being that the item is pulled. We came all the way down here from the other side of series.
Hello, council, and good evening. I think it's important that as a business owner in the local community, my father and myself, we used to be able to help our police department via car washes off of our Chevron car wash. We leased it out, so I think it's important that we serve our community and give back to them in the frontline. So I think it's important that they get another traffic unit out there, and I think they're in need of that as well, correct? Yeah. Any questions, concerns?
No, no concerns. Just thank you very much. I appreciate all you do for the community. And thank you for working with Chief Collins to bring in this item. Thank you very much. Council?
No, I also would like to thank him for the donation. That's very generous.
Right. Anybody else? Make sure that nobody's on Zoom that would like to make a comment?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, let's move forward.
Move to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash ten.
Again.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez. I think right before this started, we had a gentleman in the in the audience.
I did not see, I did not see him. Did you want to make a comment on that last item before we finish our roll call? Go ahead, step up.
Thank you.
Good night.
Unacly series. I guess the city attorney is either. Oh, there he is. Looks like a gangster. He just answered a question about donations from a business or an organization. What was the correct pronunciation, the donation for the motorcycle fund? The corporation, right?
The city is a municipal corporation, and it's able to accept donations.
And donations come from a private individual?
Yes.
And does it matter the amount or anything? Didn't know that. I'm all for the motorcycle thing, of course. And if you have any knowledge of those people donating the money, maybe this gentleman behind me, maybe they should chip in for the lawnmowers. Thank you.
Why not? Thank you. Let's go ahead and do that roll call once again, if we get it right.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
No unfinished business, no public hearing, moving on to new business. Item number nine, Resolution number twenty twenty-two twelve, approving amendments to salary range for the chief of police, J ninety-one, and the salary range for department heads, J eighty-nine. Alex, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is a resolution amending the salary ranges for the chief police and department head. Department heads are unrepresented, and negotiations occur directly with each individual department head. Once negotiations are complete, individual contracts will return at the council for ratification. The current ranges of the six department head positions at the city are significantly behind the labor market. As such, we're recommending this evening that the salary ranges for the six city department heads be increased by seven point five, five, six percent to improve recruitment and retention of department heads and improve competitiveness in the labor market. The effective date, if this is approved by the council, would be the first full pay period after adoption of the resolution. And I do have one correction to the chief of police salary schedule. Christopher, if you could bring that up. And I I believe that we have revised the resolution for council's consideration, and you do have that at the dais.
Yes, we do.
As a result of the math, the math error, the the salary schedule included in the agenda indicates seventeen point six zero. It it should be, so it, there's an error in the agendized salary schedule at seventeen point six zero. We're recommending this evening that that be adjusted to the correct rate of seventeen five six. And that schedule would be reflected as indicated on the slide and indicated in the revised resolution at the dais. So if the council is so inclined, we recommend approving the resolution with the revised salary schedule for the chief of police as indicated in the revised resolution. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Alex. Ms. Rhino?
Thank you, Mr. Tarazas, for making care of the mathematical error that I asked you about. But when I asked that question, I forgot. But when I asked that question, I forgot another question. In the staff report, it says what the impact will be to the general fund. And in the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, oh, and twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year would be twenty two thousand additional for each fiscal year, or that twenty two thousand for each department head each fiscal year?
That would be the total for the fiscal year.
So the fiscal impact for the the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal impact is going to be sixty five seven hundred. But then the next two fiscal years, it's going to be probably twenty two thousand?
So that takes into consideration that the salaries are already increased by the sixty five thousand. So it's, then it's an additional twenty two for the next year.
And that's for all six of the department?
Yes, that's combined, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cap. And thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? Members of the public have any questions? Make sure you do. I won't miss you next time. You good? Okay. Anybody on Zoom?
It's mayor.
Okay. Moving on.
Moved to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash twelve, and excited to be able to recruit department head throughout the region and with a competitive salary and benefits package.
I second that, and it's the revised twenty twenty two dash twelve.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey? Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
I have a question before I vote, because Councilmember Silvera made the motion. It is on the twenty twenty two revised, correct, council member? Correct? Okay, so, yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving on to item number ten, resolution number twenty twenty two thirteen, opposing initiative twenty one zero zero four two A one, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. Me again. This evening, staffs recommending council adopt a resolution opposing the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, which, if it qualifies for the ballot, would be on the November twenty twenty two ballot. The League of California Cities has that, the city adopt a resolution in opposition to this ballot measure. So the 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 proposed ballot measure does a number of things. I won't cover them all. And what I really wanted to do this evening was to highlight some specific examples of what the potential impact could be city of series. But this ballot measure would significantly restrict the city of series and cities statewide revenue raising authority. Would would restrict the city's ability to fines and penalty, would require voter approval for fines and penalties, would restrict local authority to to raise funds to provide critical local services, and would limit new taxes to a specific period of time. So what does that mean for the city of series? Taking it into example, measure H, measure H was with no sunset period. If this ballot measure were to pass, and if a future city council wanted, excuse me, pass another ballot measure. If this, if the city council were to consider passing another ballot measure, it would need to have sunset period. So today, no sunset period, tomorrow, a new ballot measure would need to have a sunset period. In regard to the city's utility use tax and in regard to the transient occupancy tax, there could be some likely potential annexations in the future for series. If any of that annexed land were to include a hotel, the T O T would have to be approved by the voter for that hotel to collect T O T in an, in that annexed area. Likewise, for the utility user tax to apply to that newly annexed area, it would require a vote, a vote of the vote. I'm a little redundant there, but that would require being going to the vote. So that could significantly impact revenue coming into the city coffers. I unfortunately don't have an estimate for what that potential impact could be, but it would not be insignificant. We raise about one point two million dollars now via the utility user tax. So again, it would not be insignificant, and a hotel typically provides a significant amount of T O T revenue. So if this ballot measure were to pass, those are two really concrete examples of of the financial hit that could occur to the city of series. So given those specific examples, staffs recommending the city council adopt the resolution to oppose this ballot measure.
Thank you, Alex. And the League of Cities supports us opposing this measure, correct?
I'm sorry?
The the League of Cities supports us opposing this initiative, correct?
Correct, yes.
This, if this initiative goes, goes on the ballot, and it does passes, it basically takes away local control from us when it comes down to taxes and revenue, so that and will be less money for us to invest back into the community.
Correct.
Okay, yes, thank you. Council members? No comments? Any members of the public have any comments on this item? Seeing none? Anybody on Zoom?
No, mayor.
Moved to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash thirteen, strongly opposing initiative twenty one dash zero zero four two A one.
Casey, did you want to say something? I saw you push the button.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
There's no discussion items. Is there any council member referrals today? Seeing none? I have no reports. Counsel, do you have any reports?
I do.
Ms. Rhino, go ahead.
So often lately, we all hear of light has taken over our city. And the feeling that that is not receptive, I'm to in taking care of that. So I wanted to point something out that probably most people's not even aware of. But a long weekend, which was about two weeks, weekends ago, I received an email from a constituent in my part, in my in my district, and she was upset because she had gone by Strawberry Fields Park, which is in my district. And on a Thursday morning, she noticed the park bathroom was graffiti with a pretty nasty word. I mean, all of us, but you know, you don't want your family and your kids seeing it. So she, she referred it to the graffiti line. Came back Friday morning, she drives by again. She called again. There was still no response. Friday night, it's still there. So she reached out to me and she said, I, I'm, you know, I, I've done what I think I should do. And it's not been taken care of. It's a long weekend. Worried, you know, kids are going to see this, and it's, it's really inappropriate. So I reached out to the city manager and the police chief. They both responded. It was, oh, dark thirty on Friday night. And they involved Mr. Royal, the director of public works. And everybody really got into the mode that that Saturday morning, Mr. Royal got a hold of his street supervisor or park supervisor. They sent the on duty person out there, and it wasn't just the wordy dirt on the bathroom walls, but there were racist things spray painted on the picnic tables. It was on the back of the the sign. It was on the play equipment. It was absolutely disgusting. The duty person, I don't know that he could have even gotten it taken care of, so someone reached out, got some other city workers who were willing to come in on their long weekend. And they got out there, they got the job done, and it was a very big undertaking. And I've already told them how much I appreciated it, but I do appreciate the three of you department heads for stepping up. And the workers who went out there, I know they got paid overtime, but again, it was a beautiful, long, three day weekend. And it was, it was atrocious what was, what was on our equipment. So I appreciate that, all of you, as well as the employees.
Thank you, Ms. Rhino, for bringing that. I also heard about that. You know what I was thinking? If the council would be okay with it, anytime we see something, if we could just CC each other, so that way we can all kind of be in the loop. Because I know, uh, Mike Klein, you saw some, you you reached out to Caltrans at one point because of the shrubs, and that was conveyed to Alex. And that got taken care of. And I know me and Alex are having a conversation with Caltrans tomorrow, and I'm gonna bring back a report. Another thing that my client mentioned to me that we need to do a better job of reporting, Ms. Rhonda, I do appreciate you reporting this. I think that's, that park is right down the street from my mom's house, and I do appreciate you taking that action. And I also appreciate the staff for jumping on it. I heard that the the guy that we use was out sick. Is that the reason why he couldn't jump on it? It'd be nice if we, we get a chance to get those photos. I'm just curious, you know, send it to the city council. But I don't know if the council would agree to something like that. I don't know if this is more, we're talking about reports now, but you know, CC the council when you guys, when you guys are dealing with something, so we're all fully aware of it. And then we all can try to do our best to to take action, because I know the staff is always bombarded with a lot of things. And I do appreciate, and all of us always, when we see something, we got to report it. And the same thing with our citizens. If you see something, report it. You know, I know that Mr. Warren and he, they are always reporting a lot of things, and I think that's important. We got only two guys that are always reporting things. But even small things like shopping carts, I talked to Ms. Rhino about it too. Shopping carts all over the city, just reach out to the owners of the shopping carts and see if they can get them back. Anyways, I'll, I'll stop talking, but yes, anybody else?
Yeah, I can piggyback on, John, go ahead before I talk about something else.
Sure, absolutely.
John Warren, City of Series, and thank you for your courtesy, allowing me to speak this late in the meeting. Thank you to the city staff for doing what they do when they eventually get to doing it. And sometimes that's a problem in itself, but in regards to what Ms. Rhino just spoke about, it's imperative that the city move forward with the cameras that are needed for our parks and for our placement around the major intersections of the city. If we can do nothing else but move forward with this, which will give the police department the heads up when these type of things happen, prior to possibly some citizens stumbling along and seeing these things and reporting them. It's really going to be imperative to help our city move forward and to manage the personnel and the staff that we have currently. Being able to see these things, and quite possibly in the dispatch center with somebody monitoring it, we may even be lucky enough to catch them in the act, and that would even be a bonus. So I would encourage you to take some action as soon as you can. Talk about it at the upcoming meeting on March the eighteenth. I'm sure you're going to have some citizens there making comments as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Okay, to piggyback on what Mr. Chavez said about the concerts in the park, exciting, we're going to get back to old school series concerts in the park on Tuesday nights. Every night will be sponsored by a different local business or entity. We'll have different bands of different genres there with at least two to four food vendors each night. So June fourteenth is the first concert in the park from six to eight, so people can start putting on their calendar and preparing. So we're going back to old school series concerts in the park on Tuesday nights. Super excited about it. We've had a ton of of interest on, for bands and sponsorships and everything, so it's exciting, and we'll see you all out there.
Any more additional comments? City manager?
Just to follow up on Councilmember Rhino's comments. Thank you, Councilmember Rhino. I think truly an example of together we achieve. It was really the the staff putting in the extra effort to to take care of something that was really a significant issue in the community. So clearly an example of together we achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. City attorney? Just want to comment, I like your overall way.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Department heads?
I have one item that I wanted to bring to the council's attention. I think the city manager may have given you heads up already, but last Thursday, the series police department was recognized by the Special Olympics for the number one fundraiser in Northern California. Our department raised sixty four thousand dollars in their endeavors, and that was was largely led by Officer Jeff Godfrey and some of his peers. And the CEO of Special Olympics had nothing but good things to say, and I've been a witness about the passion that he has for Special Olympics. It really puts a good mark on our name in the city as a whole. So I just wanted to make that note to the public that we were recognized for our fundraising efforts.
Thank you, chief. Okay. Any other department heads? See fingers being pointed.
Hi, Christopher Home. We have Anthony Sims here, and we have, we had a report, written report dealing with economic development in the future. We're happy to have a verbal presentation. Council desires that, and we're excited to have Anthony. I, I don't remember if we, if we introduced him at the last meeting, but he's really hit the ground running, and he's doing a great job. We're excited, and he's injecting a lot of enthusiasm, so.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Welcome, everybody. Round of applause for our new member. You see, he had, he had something to say today at some presentation, or is that you see in the future?
In the future, thank you.
Okay, is there anything you would like to say?
Councilman, Mayor, just want to say thank you for the opportunity of working for the city of series. I grew up here. As Christopher had shared, I'm really excited, have a lot of enthusiasm about improving our city and working together with you guys.
Oh, thank you. We love that. Supervisor or his assistant online today? No, okay.
One more thing. I have one more thing. Sorry to take more time. I think it's worth being recognized. Those of you that saw or heard about the recycling fire we had at Wentmore and Morgan, I was over there for two or three different times during those three days. It was amazing display of cooperation of a million fire trucks and firemen keeping that fire contained to an area that could have been catastrophic for the businesses around it and the homes around it. So I think we definitely deserve to recognize all of our regional fire partners with what an amazing job they did with that situation.
Thank you very much. That's really important. Thank you so much. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.